All right. Okay, do I have action on the minutes? We have two sets. One is from June 22nd. The other is from July 7th.
I'll move to approve the June 22nd.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second, but I have a comment on it.
Okay, all right. We have a motion, a second, and yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to. If I could, Jim, make a friendly amendment to your motion to adjust the minutes. Section 8.2 on the auditorium, I was a sole no vote on that. And I'd like that discussion to be in the in the minutes. Where Fitzpatrick asked why the quotes were coming in up to 105% higher than the estimate that was given the Budget Committee of 128,163. Response is that this came from a quote received in 2015. Fitzpatrick noted that 2016, excuse me. Fitzpatrick noted that the 2016 quote should have been given, should not then have been given to the Budget Committee as an estimate of the 2022 costs. Fitzpatrick also noted after a number of questions in the lighting plan that he did not believe that proper homework had been done in the lighting requirements to warrant launching the project at this time.
So I, I'll, I'll move to amend my acceptance to include that. That change by or adjustment by Jamie.
I'll second that.
All right. Since we have someone via Zoom, roll call vote tonight. So Jim.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Tammy.
abstain, I was not okay with that one.
Jamie.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maura.
Yes.
Rick. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion on the July 7th minute? Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, again, roll call vote, Jim.
I wasn't at that meeting, so I'll abstain.
Okay. Heather.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, okay, great. All right. Manifest documents are going around. Tom, nominations.
Okay. Read these, it's gonna take a minute.
Say there's a long list.
The whole summer hiring, so it's over 20 people. At the Bakey School, we'd like to welcome or nominate Denise Bondi as a music teacher. Rebecca Collins, grade one teacher. Stephanie, Stephanie Lenoir, grade one teacher. Laura Magnuson, library media specialist. Caitlin Goodyear for special education teacher. Amy Raganes for special education teacher. Kristen Vondra Sek for kindergarten teacher. And Hollywood for pre-K teacher. Memorial School, we'd like to recommend Catherine Blynn for the position of STEAM teacher. Bay Brown for grade three teacher. Kristen Hool for grade four teacher. Nicole Naumann for grade four teacher. Kate Ormiston for grade four teacher. And Nicole Richard as a school nurse. For the middle school, Corey Landsman, grade six STEM teacher. And Robin Lee, reading intervention teacher. For the high school, happy to recommend Eric Beebe for English teacher. Laura Betts for special education teacher. Jennifer Brett for school counselor. Maureen Cludier for special education teacher. Robert Hadsmannolus for special education counselor. Emily La Francis for English teacher. And Sean Solomon for physical education teacher.
Move to accept.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Great job, excited to have new staff join our team.
I, I do want to say that there are some districts that are considering delaying the opening of school because they don't have enough staff.
Oh wow.
There are some districts that are actually contemplating extreme measures, particularly in Texas where they are looking at having school four days a week to try to retain teachers. The crisis is real. And we are very, very lucky. I spoke to three superintendents today who said that they literally don't know how they're going to open school in a week. And we are not in that position, but we are still understaffed. The Bakey School had to reorganize some para positions and hire teachers to manage the special education programming and they're notifying parents and working with them. And we have a few teachers on this list that will have to stay at their current districts until they fill the open positions because the superintendents could not release them from their contracts, even though they wanted to. So we'll have a couple of subs in the fall to get started, but we have people hired and ready to go. I just can't stress enough, I just want to take a moment to thank Diana Rooney. She has worked tirelessly. Troy, Dr. Kennett has worked nonstop this summer. Our team has never, ever worked harder than this summer. And that's why schools opening. And it's because of the hard work and the valuable administrators that we have and the teachers who participated in interview processes. So thank you to everyone for the team effort. It's made a big difference.
All right, so roll call vote. Jim.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Yes. Jamie. Yes.
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 Rick.
Yes.
Great. All right, resignations.
We have a few. At the Bakey School, Deidre Ducharme. And Melissa Jaconda and Amanda Welvers at Memorial, Crystal Leicos. At the middle school, Carolyn Parks, Jens Vittoria. And at the high school, Desiree Gallagher. Just wanted to note that Mrs. Rooney has also been very hard at work. Meeting with all of these people to do exit interviews and she'll be providing a report at the end of September, similar to the one that she did earlier this year, but an updated report regarding those exit interviews. One thing that we've noted is that it's not just the exit interviews that are a problem for us. We're having a hard time with our starting pay. So we've had teachers that we wanted to hire, that we wanted to have come on board and they chose to go to other districts to present starting pay. So Mrs. Rooney will give us a detailed report. Similar to the one she did the spring, the video that she did in September.
I have a motion to accept with regret.
Second.
Right. No discussion, well, does anyone have?
Just regrets, a lot of these are good teachers.
Yes, they are. Roll call vote, Jim.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maura.
Yes.
Rick. Superintendent's report.
So I just wanted to take a minute. It's been a very, as I said, it's been an incredibly busy summer, probably the second busiest summer of my career. We, we have completed the, the track being paved. Thank you to Matt Angel and Dan Doyle and the team. It looks amazing. If you haven't been out to see the track, it's phenomenal. We have, I had a lot of work going on at the middle school. The basketball court has gone in and we're preparing for school there. And I do want to say thank you to specifically Dan Doyle and Matt Angel. And also to our custodial staff. The offices at the middle school, we only received one quote to build the offices at the middle school. It was over $90,000. So our team stepped up and did a lot of the work in-house, which is no small feat when you are trying to accomplish all the cleaning that needs to be done and the custodial staff is down by four or five people all summer. And they built the offices for under $30,000. And so thank you, Matt, for everything that you've done. Matt has, Matt, Dan was over there, Matt and Dan were over there mudding, literally mudding the walls in 90-degree heat to get it done. I, I'm very, very grateful. And also, I think I posted on Facebook, you know, Mr. Rodding and, and I'm trying to think, Wendell's last name. Fiddler. Wendell, Wendell, Wendell and I have bonded over painting. We both love to paint stuff, but they were rocking it out last week. So they're all ready to put the trim in and then move the furniture and it's really right on the cusp of being done. And it's, Phyllis and I bought them lunch today just to say thank you for going the extra mile to paint everything. So we're, we're definitely moving forward. Gordon has been working really hard on the wifi. It's going great. It's just a lot to install all of that technology. The, the auditorium, the parts haven't come in yet. So that process is happening. It's all ordered, it's going to be a while. We won't, that's the only piece that we won't see until later on in the school year. We have, as I said in my, around the employment piece of this, special education staffing has been really challenging this summer for everyone nationally. We're no different. I, I just wanted to say again, thank you to Dr. Kennett for really stepping up and working really hard to figure out a plan for the Bakey School. He has done an exceptional job with that. It was a really challenging summer. We've been talking often. I think that it's really important to note that we, we also had a very productive summer with regard to goals. We worked on the manual for grading at the high school level. And I do want to give props to our new principal, Mrs. Mitchison. And Christine DeRocher, who worked very hard to get teachers together. The three of us facilitated the conversation over two days. And although not everyone agrees completely, everyone was heard and valued. So we told everyone at the beginning, whatever your opinion is, you'll be heard and valued. And we got to figure this out and we did. And they did a fantastic job. The teachers were great. So the manual is ready and I just wanted to thank them for that. And it's important to note that in addition to that, they had to flip everything over in Alma to a different side of Alma that does a different type of grading. And on top of all that, we've had some turnover in the tech department. So thank you to Dan, Gordon and the tech department for all of their hard work because we are in great shape to start this year. I really couldn't be happier as a superintendent with my team. So thank you to everyone.
All right. We'll move on to subcommittee reports. Anyone has a report, just raise your hand and we'll go around. Heather.
Policy met this evening. We reviewed five policies that we will be bringing forward to the meeting tonight. So I don't go into detail on those. And we, our next meeting is September 7th, 5:20 here.
I, I don't think I ever the report from Public Relations.
Oh, okay.
All right, so Public Relations supplemental is June 1st. And it's Ms. Mahoney, Ms. Singham. Myself, Superintendent Ambrose. Superintendent Ambrose said the first order of business is the nominee chairperson. Singham made a motion to nominate Mr. Edelman, seconded by Ms. Mahoney. Mr. Edelman asked about details of the chairperson's responsibilities, which Mr. Ambrose explained to Mr. Edelman, accepted nomination. Vote was all in favor. Mr. Ambrose expressed his intention that the goals and objectives of the strategic plan be a part of the committee's agenda items for the fall to keep the public informed. He gave an example of staff retention, how best we can acknowledge the issues surrounding that topic and how we are addressing them. He detailed the budget ramifications and decisions related to contracts in the past and present and the plan moving forward. He reiterated that the goal is to prompt people to read the strategic plan. We are not hiding issues. Ms. Singham made a motion to approve the minutes of 2:22, seconded by Ms. Mahoney. The vote on that was all in favor. Singham recommended holding focus groups on different areas of the strategic plan, given that many people may not be watching the subcommittee meetings. Mr. Edelman commented on a misconception the public holds in accepting and expecting board members to individually solve problems when as a whole their role is to make recommendations. So recommending the ways in which the public can participate in a productive manner to become educated on issues is critical. He added that every, that every message should include how and why of what we are doing. Discussion ensued on social media messaging and how to promote community involvement, working together to solve issues productively. Mr. Edelman reviewed the focal points of the district since the pandemic began, which he believes served as a distraction from addressing the bigger, more important issues going on. Mr. Ambrose touched on the mental health effects of the pandemic, when everyone had helped best to use routines and structure to address that. This will take a while. He added that even staff who are leaving, will leave a fresh start will help them mentally to move forward. Whatever our issues from a public relations perspective, there's no topic to discuss as a group. Ms. Singham commented that in addition to the huge issues surrounding code, the district's reorganization at the same time, made for big changes in the cultures in certain schools. This is an elephant in the room greatly affecting the community and they don't easily forget changes. Mr. Ambrose agreed that change is difficult and he still hears about change from 20 years ago. He said the focus we need to agree on as team is a board and that board, and as follows, aligning the curriculum, getting common assessments to figure out where kids are in learning curriculum and doing something about it. Singham mentioned the importance of mental health. Mr. Ambrose agreed it's a huge part of this. The next meeting date is September 2nd, September 7th, 2022. And we adjourn the meeting at 5:55.
Great, thank you. All right, if there are no other subcommittee reports, we will move on to JJ, Student Council Representative Report.
So it's crazy to think that we're already at this time of year, but work for homecoming has already started. Individual grades are soon to be starting their initial steps for creating their banner, parade float, skit, dance and all that kind of stuff. Students have already been making use of the new basketball court that was constructed earlier this summer and from what I've heard, they've been very satisfied. It's apparently very great to see it out the window. They're excited to keep using it and I've heard it's a significant upgrade over the courts that are at like Memorial and Bakey School, or Memorial and Swayze and Greenie Park are the three that were used previously. So that's been, that's very good. Students are very happy about that. Students are really eager, eager to waiting for their final schedules to be released and the master schedule as we get closer and closer to school. Student Council's first meeting as a full council will be a week from now on August 24th in the morning at 10:00 AM. And it's a fun one, as required by RSA 194:23-F, Roman numeral two. I'm reporting that the school board and myself were petitioned by students with the intent of expressing their opinions of dissent and discontentment with the choice of appointment for principal. This petition got 114 signatories or 20% of the student population.
First public comment. All right. I guess we'll move on to new business. Acceptance of Bakey booster donation for $4,800.
The Bakey Boosters donated $4,800 to purchase 10 air conditioning units for, for DJ Bakey Elementary. So this is going to be for 10 different classrooms on the backside of the building that is the hottest.
Side.
I make a motion to accept and I thank the Bakey Boosters.
Second. Thank you. Discussion.
So Matt, when this was talked about previously, you had indicated there's some concern about the electrical load on Bakey. Has that been reviewed and verified that that's not going to be an issue?
It's not going to be an issue because we, we actually, what we did was we, we put in switches. So normally what happens is the Chromebooks get charged during the evening. And so if they want to have air conditioning, they have to turn off the charging and they're using that circuit for the air conditioning. So it's one or the other.
Okay, so, but that's been verified, so that's not going to be an issue.
Not going to be an issue.
Perfect.
Thank you for working on that, Matt.
All right, if there's no further discussion, go to a roll call vote. Jim.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes, and thank you.
Yeah. Myself, yes. Maura.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
All in favor, perfect. Approval of DOE 25.
So the DOE 25 and actually the MS 25, they're both the same reports. The DOE 25 goes to the Department of Education, while the MS 25 goes to the Department of Revenue Administration. The DOE 25 is the one that has a lot more detail in it. And it, it reports our financial condition of the district. So the first, if you look on page one, which is page two of the PDF file, that's the balance sheet of the, of the, of the school district. And the number that everyone focuses on is in the far left-hand column, third number up from the bottom, it's $1,175,124.75. And that's the unassigned fund balance. That's the number that's going to get returned back to the taxpayers when the tax rate is set. And this is the form that identifies that number.
Where's, where's that again?
So it's page two of the PDF, but if you were to print it out, it would be page one.
And right after the signature page.
Yep.
So 1175124.
Yes.
Oh, I see it, thank you.
Okay, so this would represent like the retained earnings of an organization if this was a commercial organization. Okay? The next few pages go through the, the revenues by fund and the general fund is in the far left-hand column. And then after revenues would be expenditures for the general fund and it's going to be broken out by function, no, first, first by location, which is going to be elementary school, middle school and high school. By function, which is going to be like instruction, support services, and then also by object code. Object code would be like personnel salaries, benefits, supplies and material and equipment. Now, every year, we have to have the school board actually approve it and sign the document. So I have to have you all sign both of these documents before we leave tonight because they're due September 1st.
That's not in this folder, I'm guessing, right?
That's not in that folder. Tom's got the original.
More signatures coming, more, don't you worry.
All right. It's in here.
So do you need a motion to accept or do we just sign? How does that?
You can sign. That would be fine.
Okay. We don't have to, we don't have to take a vote.
That one and the other one, it's a.
Okay, JJ has it. I let him look at it because I want to see what it looked like.
Okay.
You can just pass it to the left to Heather.
So are we signing both or just one?
Signing both.
Matt, I see that on the last page, we got adjusted cost per student for each of the elementary, middle school, high school.
Yes.
I don't see where the student count is.
The student count, if you start with the bottom number, the student counts would be the.
The average daily membership, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And so the average daily membership, what it is, is if you have a student come to school and they miss, let's just take one week as an example. So if a student only shows up for four days, the average daily membership would be four fifths. Okay, so four days of attendance over five available days. Okay?
It is incredibly convoluted. It's not about the number of students, it's about the number of days they actually attend.
Yeah, and then this was one of the things that we had said in the finance committee is we like to go through how these numbers are generated.
Yes.
Because when I read through the RSA, I read things differently. And I just need to understand what that is. So I mean, I don't mind signing this, but we do need to do that in one of the finance subcommittees is.
I'd love to dig into that.
Yeah, just so that everybody's clear as to what's going into these numbers and where they're coming from.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I'm just going to sign it and pass it down?
Yep.
Plan, okay.
Do they need to have a motion to accept or?
They don't. I, I just need the signatures. Because this, this state won't accept the report without this.
One's coming this way. Yep. We're crisscrossing here. Crisscross applesauce. Yep. While we all sign, Tom, do you want to talk about grading policy?
Sure. You will see in the policy committee, so could, could we just combine seven, four and seven, five?
Absolutely.
It's really the same conversation.
Yep.
So there are five policies here that are very important for the start of school. One is the electronic devices policy. In essence, the electronic devices policy says that from this point forward, students will have to put their cell phones away, put them on do not disturb or silent mode. And have them or shut off. You know, we didn't want to make it so that they had to shut them off. If they put it on do not disturb, it's not going. The goal is to focus on what's being taught and learned. So we started out with progressive, we talked a lot this summer, teachers, administrators. And the feeling is that we're going to start with this progressively. So we started, instead of going from zero to 60, we're going to 25 miles an hour, which is when you're in class, turn it off. You can have it in the hallway, you can have it at lunch. If that doesn't work, then we're going to have to move more progressively toward only at lunch. And then if that doesn't work, then it's, we're going to come back to the board and ask for the policy to become not at all. But we want to see where we can get if it's just during class time. The teachers, when Mrs. Rooney and I met with the sixth through 12 teachers last year, were adamant that cell phones are a huge problem. Adamant. There are a small number of people that didn't agree as always, that you can never have perfect consensus. But it was really strong. Troy is having issues at Bakey with cell phones. And particularly Apple Watches. So we added Apple Watches. Any, any watch that's a technological device needs to be on, do not disturb during class time. And then we also added drones because we didn't have a policy about drones. Okay, so those things are in the policy. I'm going to just go through all of these at once to save time. And then if you want to discuss one of them, we can. The second one is a subtle modification. We already have public comment at board meetings, so there's just some legal updates about public comment. That's pretty straight ahead. We need to have 30 minutes of public comment per board meeting. We have, what we have to do now is when that, when that first public comment starts, if someone shows up late, within a 15-minute window, they still get to speak. Right, same thing on the second one after, they get 15, we have a 15-minute, you have to have a 30-minute window in a meeting for people to be able to speak if they show up late. Yes.
Excuse me, does that mean that if there's nobody here, you still have to just do nothing for 15 minutes?
No, we can continue our business, but if they show up and they want.
Okay. Just want to get that clarification.
Yeah. It's a new law, so it hasn't been tested.
No, I think, I think that makes sense.
But it's fair and reasonable, you know, if somebody wants to, the goal is to allow the words here with the public access. Yep. And then the homework guidelines, the graduation competencies, the earning of credit are congruent with the conversation that staff had this summer implementing the grading policy that the board set at the last meeting. So it just updates the policies to be congruent with the practice. Yes.
Just going back to the board meeting thing. 15 minutes. What if there's one person here? Speak for how long?
Three minutes.
Still three minutes.
Still have the same.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, yeah. So you, you still have, we have to leave the window open for 15 minutes. But if we had 25 people, they would each get their three minutes. Okay? Thanks, Rick. The, the big thing that I want parents to know about the grading changes is that there are some significant changes to the reassessment. And we will be rolling all of this information out tomorrow in emails. Mrs. Mitchison and her team have it ready. Mr. Malilla and his team have it all ready. We just wanted to wait for the board to adopt before we send things out to parents. The staff have been incredibly collaborative about this. They have worked really hard. And so even those who didn't agree could live with where we came to at the end. And it wasn't, it was great. It was a very collaborative process. And I just want to echo so that the, the community hears from me that this is the way this district is going to run moving forward. We are going to work together to solve complicated problems. And there are going to be people who agree, there are going to be people who disagree,[1658.86] And there are going to be people who agree, there are going to be people who disagree, and people will be valued and their voices will be heard. But at the end of the day, once we make a decision, we have to accept it and move forward. The decision has been made. We're going to move forward this year. At the end of this year, we're going to review how it went. And then we'll make decisions about what to do the next year. A cycle of continuous improvement is the only way for a healthy community organization to function. Having said that, we will be making some exceptions for our seniors who are, we'll give them a little more flex and help them out a little bit because they're seniors. Right? And and we we understand that they're used to a certain system and the guidance office will work in collaboration with the administration and teachers to support our seniors. Because we we recognize that they, JJ, has a style that he's been used to for three years and we want to support him and make sure that he has a great fourth year. So we're we're, it's going to be more rigid for the first two grades, freshman and sophomore. A little less flexible for juniors and a little more flexible for seniors, but still I want to be clear, there are three things that come out of all of this. If we're going to build a culture of excellence, we have to commit to working hard. That means focused. It means that we're in school, we're in school to learn. It means that that when we do, we do homework, it has purpose and meaning and it counts for something. That when there's a deadline, you turn it in on time and if it doesn't go well, the teacher will work with you to make sure that you learn. That's what we're doing here now and that's the vision of the future. We're going to align our curriculum. We're going to create common assessments for the curriculum and then we're going to do something about it when students don't do well. If you ask me what the the goal of the district is, the goal is to do those three things. To ensure that every student gets to a high level. That means that there are going to be some students that need to work harder. It means that there are going to be some adults that have to work harder, parents and teachers. It's going to mean that somebody might not pass a class. Excellence isn't easy. If it was easy, everyone would just do it. So we have to come together and do it together. It's going to take everyone to move us to the next level, everyone. And so I'm inviting anyone who wants to be involved to come to the table. We're happy to work with you. But we have to work, move forward. And and what that means to me is students will be reading a lot, students will be writing a lot. Students will be calculating and using their math skills to solve problems a lot. Students will be using their creativity and their critical thinking to make decisions, not being told what to think. Those are the things that I believe in. And so these policies are the first big step toward moving out of the pandemic into a future of excellence. And I'm very, very excited about the way this came out with the staff this summer. How's that?
All right.
So you. Music, music to my ears.
Thank you, Jim. You can move the group or you can take one policy at a time. It's up to you guys.
Mr. Ambrose, I have one question about the technology policy. So I, is there an exception in there for when the teacher wants the students to use their phones for educational things? Like if we're doing an interactive activity or something?
We we have agreed as a staff that that isn't working. That what happens is it turns into too much gray and and we discussed that at length, JJ, it's a great question and I really appreciate it. We are agreeing that we're going to use the Chromebooks for the educational purposes so that cell phones stay put away. So they're they're put away, period. Great, great question, though. And I'm sure you guys will have lots of questions for Ms. Mitchison and I'm happy to come to Student Council and talk to you guys too, right? Now that we're getting back, I'll come visit with you all, right?
You're free to come to our meeting that I reported on earlier. That's a week from today at 10 to 12.
All right, let's email me the time and I'll see if it fits my schedule. Yep.
Jim, Jimmy.
Yep.
Just a, an observation on the cell phone policy. You might want to, I know that it says in there, no videos anyways. But it doesn't, it says it's okay in the hallways and it says it's okay in the lunchrooms, but it doesn't specifically say it's not okay in bathrooms. I think you're going to find yourself going to have a problem with that. Okay. So just feedback, you know, see how it goes, but I think what you're going to find is that there's going to be activity in the bathrooms that shouldn't be in the bathrooms with cell phones. And since it's not specifically banned, people will say, I wasn't on the video, I was just doing something on the cell phone. We'll put that one in the handbook. Yeah, so just, it's it's something to be cognizant of. And we may need to revise this in October anyway. So we'll, 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 we'll definitely.
It does specify in here, the use of personal cameras or video slash sound recording functions on any personal electronic device is strictly prohibited.
Correct.
Video, sound recording functions are only permitted for specific course-related projects on school-owned devices. So it does say you can't use it, period. It doesn't say. It basically says you can't use your camera at all during the school day.
And that is exactly what we were going for is that you are not to record. I did too, but I know none of our students are this way, but I was. So when I was doing things that I wasn't supposed to be doing and I got caught at it, I would say, no, 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 I was just using my cell phone. I bet you had the policy book at your high school memorized. That would be my guess. Pretended there wasn't one. Ah, okay. And I paid dearly for it.
Clear, you were actually saying that you had a cell phone.
We had other rules. We had the portable phone.
Pull up in a DeLorean.
Point taken.
Can I make a motion to approve all five?
Yes.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Absolutely.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes, and Yahoo.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, approval of superintendent's doctoral research at St. Boron Regional School.
Thank you. I I did want to thank the board for the support in my doctoral work. It has picked up pace a lot the last year. My first year in the program, I took four courses, one at a time. And then during the middle of the pandemic, I took a break because it was a lot to manage the district in the heart of things. Last fall, I took one class and then in the winter, I took a second course. In the spring, I took two and then over the summer, I took three at one time, which was not, it's not recommended by them and I will tell you, I don't recommend. So I wrote hundreds of pages this summer and the three courses that I studied most intently of the whole program, one was situated leadership. The other was culture and the other was consulting. And it's really interesting how the three things link together. So I am getting to the point where I'm ready to do my research. I have completed all of the core coursework for my doctorate. So what happens now is this fall, I will do research at the high school, providing that you approve this, on the teaching of reading. And then I will work with staff to implement an intervention for the teaching of reading. And then on the, after that, I take all the data and information from all that work and write my doctoral thesis. So it has been a really inspiring summer. It's been exhausting, but I have never learned so much. I'm also really thrilled to share that I I didn't know this. I I signed up for Northeastern University because I wanted to work. Northeastern is focused on relations and collaboration and that was really important to me. Um, one of my friends had completed the program there, so I applied. When you all asked me about getting my doctorate. So I found out this summer that Northeastern is the number one education doctoral program in the country. They were just awarded that. Haven't found out exactly which organization gave it to them. But they're keeping it super under wraps because it's a big announcement, right? So they're they're talking about it. It's coming. I'll let you know when I find out. I I do want to say that of all the professional development, the only place that's rivaled the learning at Northeastern is Columbia. The 10 years I spent working at Columbia in the summer was really good. This is just as good, maybe even a little bit better. So I just wanted to thank you and I just need you to approve that I do the research at the high school. So I would need a motion to approve that and then Dawn signs a letter and then that goes in for what's called the internal review board. And they're almost ready to approve my study. They just said I needed, it couldn't be Christine or Patty that signs. It has to be the board approval because of my role. I just want to specify for clarity for the community, Tom. This would all be anonymous, right? You'd not be using any names or what have you. Thank you. Yes, in in the study of of human subjects, you have to guarantee anonymity. So anyone that I talk to or work with with regard to this work, we use pseudonyms and no information or or identifying information is ever shared in any capacity in the study. Thank you for asking.
Yep.
Are there any concerns with conflict of interest within your role as a superintendent overseeing Ms. Mitchison?
Yep, we have to work really, really hard and be clear with people that any participation is completely voluntary. And I've already been clear with people that if they don't want to participate and even to the level where if we get into the study and they don't feel comfortable, they can withdraw.
Okay.
So it's it's spoken about greatly because the purpose of the leadership training is to to balance that that piece where you're a part of the organization, that you're working, a lot of principals do this program. With you want to balance being a part of the organization and solving problems locally at the the community level with being an insider and an outsider simultaneously. So it's a great point, Heather. I really appreciate that you brought that up.
All right, so do we have a motion?
Motion to approve superintendent's doctoral research at St. Boron Regional High School.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Any further discussion? Oh, is Jim trying to? I can't hear. Hold on, Jim, we can't hear you. Jim, can you try unplugging and replugging in your headset maybe?
They saying it's on my end?
There we go. We got you.
Okay.
You're back.
Tom, I'm just wondering if you could describe a little bit how this parallels with your work as superintendent? And if it's going to be during the the normal work day, what kind of time you're talking about for the research part? And also congratulations on getting your coursework done.
Thank you, thank you. So most of the meetings with teachers, there'll be focus groups and individual interviews and the focus groups will be with parents and teachers. And the individual interviews would probably be with teachers and most of the work will happen outside of the school day. There may be occasional meetings during a professional learning community meeting, depending on how things happen, but the the gist of the work is that it's voluntary and not on school time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Great. No old business. Second public comment.
Question? Am we going to address the the 2.5% this meeting?
Um, I don't know if we want to, so Jamie had brought up the last meeting we made it ever when we made a statement about how much the taxing impact was per household.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be good to just do it again, so the public has the right information.
Clarify so that.
It's up to you all if you'd like to, I would put it on. That's fine too.
Because it's also, this meeting is not the live stream down to.
Yeah, you might.
I have no problem. I just.
Well, we'll, we'll put it on, Phyllis, can we make sure that that goes on the next?
Just for clarification of what it is.
Yeah.
Went through and we made the decision unanimously to withhold the two and a half percent contingency. The numbers that were tossed around said that's a $24 impact to the average household. That was per hundred thousand, not per the whole two and a half percent.
The $300,000 home is $75.
Well, so it it turns out to, it'd be about 140 bucks, 150 bucks, depending on what town you're in. So it's significantly different. I mean, it's not, I don't think it's going to change the vote, but since what we said in the in the meeting, what's out there in the video says it's $24 a house, that's that would be incorrect. That was that was per hundred thousand and it's 500 something, 545,000, 537,000.
So we'll pop that on the agenda.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie. All right, so a second public comment. All right. So it looks like we are just about done. Next St. Boron Regional School Board meeting.
I have a question. On next meeting agenda, have we, have we finalized our board goals for the year?
No.
We need to do that at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, thank you, Tammy. Um, so the next St. Boron Regional Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, September 7th, 2022 at 6:30 PM in the library at the St. Boron Regional High School. And the budget committee will hold their next meeting on Thursday, August 25th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the library at St. Boron Regional High School. And now we will, who would like to bring us into non-public per RSA 91A, Roman numeral two, let her see.
You just said it, didn't you?
But you, somebody just has to say, so move.
I like a mega.
There you go. Trying to save everybody. Checking. Thank you, Tammy. All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Awesome. All right.